At this time, I'd like to call the call to order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted. At this time, I'll call Park Commissioner Victor Leal to lead us in an application.
If you'll join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We just thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us in 2017, Lord. And, Lord, as we reflect upon those who are no longer with us in 2017, we just mourn for them, Lord. Lord, we ask for a blessing over this meeting, over this commission, over the things that we say and do. We just ask that we allow us to honor and glorify your name in Jesus Christ. Holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, here to our city commission meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. On behalf of the city commission, we welcome, we wish you a happy new year and a prosperous new year. We hope that it'll be as successful as it was for the city of Harlingen in 2017. I think that it will be. First item on the agenda is a presentation by Brandon Rainey, developer with B.C. Lynn regarding the Harlingen Convention Center project. Carlos?
Mayor, commissioners, happy new year. This evening, Mayor, as you mentioned, we have Brandon Rainey, the developer for the convention center, to elaborate and or give us a timeline, give you all the status on the marketing efforts for the convention center, where we're at in the timeline as to where we're hoped to be with the completion of a marketing plan that will include a operating cost structure, revenues, and rental rates. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Brandon.
All right. Thank you, Carlos. Brandon Rainey, welcome.
Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for having me here, and happy new year to you as well and to all of you. I thought I would be coming down here to escape the 24-degree weather I had at my back porch this morning, but it sounds like you guys are gonna get some cool weather tonight.
We brought you ready with you.
I think I might've brought it with me. So, anyway, again, thank you for having me here. I spent some time earlier today over at the site of the construction project, catching up with the contractor. And, you know, despite the fact that we've had some weather challenges over the past couple of months, they are making really good progress now. We've had some slowdown as a result of weather, but the contractor told me today that they have a good plan for scheduled recovery, and so have a lot of confidence in what they're doing out there at the site. Excited to start seeing the project coming up out of the ground, which we should start seeing here early next month. With respect to the marketing efforts and the development of a budget for the convention center and rental rates for the convention center, Dan had asked me to come in and speak to that. I've had my folks here in the market several times over the past several months, really working hard and talking, not only with our competitors in the market that exist today over in McAllen and at Brownsville and South Padre and others, but also to businesses in the valley and outside of the valley, really trying to get a bead on our original assumptions and how things are stacking up for when we open this facility later this year. And as Dan and Carlos had mentioned, we are, I think, before the end of this month, are gonna be in a position to come back for formal approval on actual rental rates of the space, which, as I understand, has been a question that's come up, obviously, that we'd like to have answered. And what I have talked with the city manager about is that we want to make certain that we're marrying up what we view as competitive rates, but also acknowledging the level of quality in the actual facility and the level of service that we, as the operator, intend to deploy at that facility. And so, you know, we're really going and running through the paces to confirm our assumptions over the next couple of weeks, and my intent will be then to be in a position to provide the city manager for presentation back to the commission, I think, in two weeks, Dan, is what you and I talked about, what the rental rates are going to be proposed for 2018, 2019. And that, then, will enable us to respond to calls which are already being fielded by both the city and by our office for interest in actually renting and occupying the space. So we're excited about the volume of unsolicited calls that we have been receiving and that the city has been receiving, and expect to be, again, before the end of the month, in a position to be able to provide rates and actually enter into agreements for rental of the space in the future. Also, with those rates, we have developed a full-blown marketing plan, which we will present as well, which really digs down into the details of our efforts, what they will be relative to how we're gonna run the facility, what our expectations are from a revenue and expense standpoint, and also how we stack up against the other competitors in the market. So that's something that, again, we should be, hopefully, in a final form for presentation to you guys within the next several weeks. With that, I mean, any questions that any of the commissioners or Mr. Mayor that you guys might have on that or other subjects, I'm happy to field those.
Yeah, we wanted Brandon to come in and give an update to the commission on the marketing efforts and the process that he's undertaking to establish the rental rates, which will come before the city council, for consideration, in the near future, at the next meeting. That's what we're shooting for.
That's what we're trying for.
So if there's any questions for Brandon at this point.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so when you say the marketing, are we doing any outbound marketing or just collection of information?
So right now, we're doing collection. We are working, in addition to producing the marketing plan, which you can kind of look as like a business plan, okay, that's very refined into how we're going to attack the various segments in the marketplace to attract business into the city. So we are not overtly outbound marketing. We are finalizing right now, as an example, marketing collateral and materials such as floor plans and layouts, so that when we do go out, we are showing the various capabilities of the facility, the various ways that it can be used. And so we have, over the past several months, been developing that collateral that then we will use for the outbound marketing that we're planning. So, but that has not started yet. I expect it to start here shortly in the middle of first quarter.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, well, I think we appreciate you coming down to keep us
Absolutely.
apprised and go out there to the site and see what's working, so it's all positive to the services.
Should I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
What's the status of the hotel?
Oh, good, yeah. I'm actually glad you asked, as I intended to talk about that if I wasn't asked. Hotel is obviously a little bit behind where we wanted it to be. We originally intended for the hotel to be started on or about the same time as the convention center. That's not the case. We are working on finalizing our financing on that, and as I've told the city manager, I don't have any concerns about the if, just the when. And the when, I think, is gonna be here in the first quarter, that we actually put a shovel in the ground on the hotel. And, you know, we will be working very hard, once we do get started, to align the opening of the hotels closely to that of the convention center as possible. And the way that I really see it playing out is that the hotel, the convention center's gonna be running through its paces of, you know, pre-opening and running through, getting that facility really cranking about the time that the hotel is open. And so I don't anticipate that from a disruption of the convention center, I don't really see in the early months of the convention center being open and getting the paces and all, getting it ready to go and really perform in 2019. My suspicion is that the hotel's gonna be right on the heels of that. Again, not ideal for us in particular, because we lose some economies of scale as the private developer of the hotel, that we otherwise might have been able to take advantage of in having two projects going at the exact same time. But my guess is, Commissioner, that we'll probably be started in the next couple of months and then be a few months behind the actual opening of the convention center. So that's where it is. We do have some opportunity on the actual schedule of the hotel, which originally we had at 12 months. Contractors saying that if we do certain things from an expediting standpoint, that could be as little as 10 and 1/2 months, which will help that. So again, our intent would be to be under construction here in the first quarter and be as closely aligned to the opening of the convention center as possible. So I don't know if that answers for you, but that's just kind of where we are. Again, no concern on our part over getting started, it's just, unfortunately, and for a variety of reasons, it's been delayed in our getting the financing package completed, but we expect to have that post haste.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brandon. I have to his recognition to the city of Harlingen Vitals Statistics Department, recipient of 2017 exemplary five-star service award. Why don't you, yeah, come on up and we'll... All right, well, this is really exciting to be able to give presents to you all this 2017. It's not our award, it's the annual Texas Vitals Statistics Conference Award, but to recognize the team, our health director, Josh Cerritos, our local registrar, Yana Vargas, who, you know, trained us all, trained all of us down deep. There'd be registrar, Delve, and that'd be registrar, Crystal. So we want to congratulate you all for, once again, receiving the 2017 exemplary five-star service award. Out of 400 local registrars in the state of Texas, only 36 cities were able to obtain that, less than 10%. So the Harlingen Vitals Statistics Office has obtained this award every year since its commencement in 1999. And once again, and so we want to congratulate you for the great work. I mean, that's a big job that you all have in Vitals Statistics, and it's a lot of data to keep up with and continue the process, and you all do a great job, and it's great to be able to thank you and recognize you for outstanding contributions back to serving the public here. So thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything else about what it does for the award or...
I don't know, she knows all of it.
Oh, my goodness. Me neither.
Thanks for listening as well, and thanks for the opportunities that you all have stood, was down to do a great job here in Harlingen.
We love it. We honestly, truly know our job. This is only the first one. It's a great duty.
They take the challenge apart.
We do.
All right, congratulations. All right, now, item number three is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of August 29, 17, November, the regular meeting of November 15, 17, special meeting of November 29, 2017, and the special joint meeting of the city commission and the economic development appropriation of Harlingen, November 29, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is your motion to approve all the minutes as presented.
Submove.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items 4A through D, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Submove.
Your motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five, consideration and possible action to authorize the city engineer to negotiate contract with the respondents to call, to the call for request for qualifications for surveying services. Yes. Tammy?
Good evening. We solicited proposals of qualifications from surveyors. We sent it out to 30 registered surveys. We got eight respondents back. We anticipate having it work for a two-year period, and anytime someone would need surveying services, it's not duplicating efforts or doing staff time for doing it over and over for the two-year period. So we had five different staff members evaluate them. All of the respondents, all eight of them, are from the Rio Grande Valley and Harlingen area, and speaking with the city engineer, we thought it would be best, since it is for a two-year period, to go ahead and put all of them on the list to use them over the next two years. Staff recommends approval of all eight.
Is there a motion to authorize the city engineer to negotiate the contract? There's a motion. Second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is the update on the multi-modal transit facility. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, city manager, happy new year. This is an update on the multi-modal facility. As you may recall, this was priority number 13 identified in the comprehensive plan strategy that we had last year regarding the completion of the comprehensive plan. This was identified as priority 13. It was priority five within the list of projects that were identified for the transportation. This currently is in the MPO tip. The estimated cost for this is $5 million, with $4 million coming from the MPO and $1 million coming from the local match. We've identified possible toll revenue as a source of funding for this project. The development council is going to be conducting a feasibility study on the actual location of the site. We're going to provide options to the development council to look at for consideration of this particular facility. They should be starting the process within the next 30 days. We just wanted to give the commission an update as to where we were regarding this process. So if you have any questions regarding that process and what the feasibility study may tell, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What does multi-modal mean?
Multi-modal would be a facility that would be used to house all your, like your buses. The development council currently runs the bus system for the city, so we would house those. We would also allow for VTC to use that facility as well, Greyhound, taxi cab services would also service that facility as well, and any other type of transit that we may want to funnel through there. So anything that dealt with transit at some point, we would want to have them utilize that facility, and of course, we charge rent for the use of that facility, but that's how all the other cities make their revenue to fund the operations for the facility.
Have we identified any locations where...
We're in the process of coming up with maybe, we'd like to have at least three or four that we give them, and of course, they may come up with their own options as well, but they're only going to be looking at Harlingen sites, so that's important.
So there are other facilities similar to this in other communities in the valley?
Yes, sir. McAllen, Brazel have one. Edinburgh just broke ground on one. Those are the ones that we actually, we visited the operations for the centers in Brazel and McAllen. When we went to visit Edinburgh, it was still just land that hadn't been under construction yet, so...
This is in our comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir. It was, and then the list of prioritization projects that we had, it was identified as priority 13, which was the tranted projects. We include Per 54, the turnaround on Dixieland, and a few others. And this was priority five in those list of projects.
How big is, do you have an idea of how big the site needs to be?
No, not yet. Obviously, you'd want to have, we were thinking initially maybe five acres just to have plenty of space for growth, but it's not gonna require all five acres. We could possibly make it work with 2 and 1/2 to 3, but here, again, you want to have space for growth in the future, so...
Okay. So what's the next step?
This was just a report item. The next step is the development council's gonna start the feasibility study. They're gonna actually pay for it. They're not gonna require any cash from us. So they're gonna start the process, and once we get an area identified, we'll come back to the council for approval for that particular location.
And how long do you think that will take to complete the feasibility study?
We're hoping that they can get something to us within, once they start the process, obviously, within 30 days, so soon as, 30 days. Ron just needs to identify some funding, get that together, and then get it out to someone who can actually do the study for the development council.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending Exhibit A to ordinance number 14-10, and amend Chapter 18 master fee schedule for the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing rental rates for vendor booths, various city events held at city parks, establishing rental rates for Harlingen Field, establishing rental rates for mobile stage, establishing rental rates for bathroom units, providing publication, and any other matters to foregoing. So there is also Gabe?
Yes, sir. Amanda, can you pass out the...
Yeah.
Oh, you got it. Okay, great. Now, I can go over these in detail if you want, or I can just cover the rental rates. But this item came up as a result of the audit that the internal auditor conducted for the commission and visitors bureau. One of the things that he identified in his report was that we should have the rates that we charge for the booths, including the sponsorship levels that we have, identified and put into an ordinance, so that's where this came from. While in the process of doing this, we also wanted to include the rates for the mobile stage, the mobile bathroom, and Harlingen Field. Now, one note in particular is that we have in the ordinance that the mobile stage and the mobile bathrooms will not be rented out to the public, but we have a rate for them because the city does cosponsor other events, and so whenever we cosponsor an event, we need to know what dollar value to place on the particular piece of equipment, including the labor costs involved with that. So, starting with the rental rates, we've identified the mobile stage at a, just regular hours of $550, overtime rates of $750. Mobile bathrooms for regular use of six hours is $264.57. The overtime rate would be $339.57. Now, in the ordinance, we also identify all the rental rates for the booths that we have for McCovey Park, for an event of Blues in the Hill, which is $200, Aurora Lighting, which is less because it's not as long, and wouldn't have to spend as much money, which is $140. And then so on down the list for the various booth rentals for Long Sea Hill, which would be the Freedom Fest, Widdenaus Park, which is Cinco de Mayo. Now, we're not gonna be charging rental booth rates for that because we're not gonna provide anything to the public. The public will be allowed to use the facility during the Cinco de Mayo, but they'll have to bring their own tents, tables, and chairs. Of course, we're going to limit the number of vendors that we allow to participate in the event. It's generally about an hour and a half, that's why we're doing that. And then we also have rates for the Casa del Amistad, for the booths for the Winter Texan Appreciation Fiesta. And so we actually got these rates from what we're collecting now, so we just put them in an ordinance format. Also, in the second sheet, it lists the sponsorship levels. Now, I'm not gonna go over all of them in detail, but it starts off with the Blues in the Hill and the various levels of sponsorships, and what each one would pay either for an event or for all, or for all four events, and what comes with each event if you reach those levels of participation. Now, the amount shown did not have to be all in cash. For instance, we have $1,000 as a possible sponsor. That could be partially in-kind or partially cash, depending on what the retailer wants to provide. And we list all those amounts for the sponsorship levels for the Blues in the Hill. We also have them for Freedom Fest. Now, I'd like to point out that the Blues in the Hill does cover four events. Freedom Fest is only for one event, a one-day event. And then the Winter Texan Appreciation Fiesta is also just a one-day event, but it's got multiple sponsorship levels, and all the, all the levels that are in there now are what we're actually charging right now, so...
Okay, so just so I understand, you're already collecting rates, but they haven't, they've never been identified, or what's the issue with the internal audit?
Well, you wanted them in an ordinance, that way we could have them identified that we can't charge that rate for a particular facility.
All the other places that we have, like Long Sea Hill, our auditorium, and the other Casa del Sol, Casa del Amistad, they're all in the ordinance already.
Yes, yes.
We know that we have these. We're just not...
So this is fixing now?
And we don't want staff to be, the rates to be set by workers. The only thing I would ask is that on the mobile bathrooms, that we round up, please, to 265 and 340 respectively. I think that'll simplify that just a little bit.
Yeah, we can do that. I should do that.
The question I have, a lot of this is because we're doing cosponsors, and we have to show that there's a value, so like on the stage, it has a value to it, so when it's being offset by the other parties, that's the reason we, we're not gonna actually collect it, but there's a value, so when we...
As Gabe explained earlier, when we cosponsor events, we want to be able to place that value and what that established value is. That's what this does.
I do have one question. I keep getting the same question over and over whenever we have events. The mobile stage has got logos on it, who are not these sponsors. Are we gonna come up with some form of compensation for that, or is that a different topic from this?
That's a different topic.
Okay.
And we will bring that back. We are working on that.
Okay.
But that is a different topic for some...
So it isn't related to this in any form?
I don't know that we can discuss it at this time.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy with that. I just wanted to make sure.
But we are working on something.
It is a different topic.
It is a different topic.
We are working on something.
Okay, I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption then for the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Exhibit A of ordinance number 14-10 and amending Chapter 18 master fee schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, establishing new rental rates for vendor booths for various city events held at city parks, establishing rental rates for Harlingen Field, establishing rental rates for the mobile stage, and establishing rental rates for the bathroom units, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Submove.
Second.
With any discussion?
With that...
With the correction of this...
The rounding of the rounding up.
Yeah. You don't accept that amendment?
With the correction of the rounding up.
One second.
All right, with motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item eight, I'm gonna pass the chair to the mayor pro tem, and I'm going to exit the chamber. I filed an extension on this.
Yeah, let the record show that for number eight, the mayor has filed paperwork on this and has exited the meeting, so we can open up number eight. It's a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 district residential triplex and quadruplex and 1 districts for lots 1 and 2, block 1, Adams Treasure subdivision, located at the northeast corner of 7th Street and Vincent Avenue. The applicant is Town and Country Homes, care of Armando Elizade, planning and zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rodrigo, you're up.
Thank you, commissioners, city manager. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from single-family district to triplex, quadruplex district to allow for a fourplex on each of the two lots. There is an existing single-family residential structure on one of the lots, which the property owner is proposing to remove, and the other, the corner lot is actually vacant. The surrounding properties are residential, multifamily, single-family, and we have the academy and the Harlingen ISD baseball fields to the west of this property. The comprehensive plan, as you see, shows this to be an area of low density, although the request is not consistent with the future land use plan. It is consistent with the land use surrounding the property pattern. To present, we have not received any feedback from the people in a negative manner. Nobody came in. The planning and zoning does recommend approval, and so do we. I can answer any questions. I can answer any questions.
Rodrigo, what's the, the GR that's there, what is, what is actually on that? Is that open?
There.
The general retail.
See if I have an area.
You were just on it, yeah, there we go.
So here, there are the warehouse, and then there's nothing after that. This is, this is an apartment complex, this is a baseball field.
And a church?
It's a side.
Yeah, okay.
That's a church.
Yeah.
That's the CFC, then?
Yes.
And then the next open land there, it's general retail.
Correct, sir.
Does that seem unusual?
Well, that's, that was based on the comprehensive master plan that we anticipated that to develop, but it could change. Any other questions?
So it's going to go from one, from R one to M one?
Correct.
And next to it is M two?
Correct.
Correct?
No.
And what's the difference between M one and M two?
The M one is a triplex or a, or a quadriplex, the M two is an apartment complex.
Got it. So similar, but not the same.
Yeah, but the actual buildings themselves in the apartment complex wind up being just like that. They either have four or six.
The apartment complex is usually treated as a planned development because it's a bigger size, bigger units.
Correct. Any other questions of the commission? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody would like to speak for or against this, please approach the podium. No one has approached the podium. We'll close the public hearing, so we'll take the consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on the first reading for a rezone of the above described property.
I'm not sure if we'll approve.
Oh, hang on.
We kept it in resection.
Yeah, we'll have the attorney.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R dash one district residential triplex and quadruplex M one district for lots one and two, block one, Adams Treasure subdivision located at the northeast corner of Seventh Street and Vincent Avenue, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Okay, I'll, I'll have a motion to that effect.
Some move. One second.
First and the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. On to number nine.
All right, item nine, it's a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district located eleven oh five Southham Lane bearing a legal description of three point four seven acres out of block thirty-three steward place subdivision survey one thirty-nine slash two ninety-seven slash two ninety-eight after the condition of Martinis.
Thank you, mayor. The applicant wishes to operate a bar lounge under the name Club Envy. The area occupied approximate, is approximately twenty, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight square feet. The previous use of the property was a church, and the prior use before that was a bar. The establishment must comply with off-street parking regulations based on the seating and arrangements. Forty-five parking spaces will be required, and they are providing sixty-two. The proposed days of hours of operation is going to be Wednesday through Saturday from eight P M. to three A M. A security guard will be present during the operation hours, and a DJ will play music indoors.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that asphalt, or is it still caliche that parking up?
Okay.
It may be a little bit degraded right now, but the first step was to get this SUP approved. Once they get approved, they still have to comply with building permits. Hell. Okay, so if it is caliche, are they going to have to? They're going to have to ask for the, yes, sir.
Then I have another question. I was reading the minutes from the P and Z meeting.
Yes, sir.
And there was a Mr. Isaac Gere there?
Yes, sir.
That owns some property to the north. Can you, is that that tri, is that that rectangle right there, the small one above the?
Actually, yes, sir.
Is that him?
Yes.
Doesn't he have a problem with the length and width of that thing?
Yes, sir.
That, that is a separate issue that we have discussed with Mr. Gere, and we've invited him to come in.
I just saw how long it was compared to the frontage.
Yeah, that is, that is a one acre that was taken out of a five acre tract through meet and bounds.
Right, okay.
So he, he, he may have some issues when he tries to develop that.
But it doesn't affect this property, I just wonder if that was it.
Okay. Did you complete your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm sorry. Planning and zoning is recommending approval.
I'll go to item A, ten, and a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for or against this S U P? Hearing now, and I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is a consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a bar lounge to be above described property. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit, S U P, to Ruben Martinez to allow a bar slash lounge in a general retail GR district located at one one zero five Southham Lane and bearing a legal description of three point four seven four acres out of block thirty-three steward place survey one three nine hyphen two nine seven hyphen two nine eight, subject to, one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces in accordance with city regulations; two, maintaining the existing landscaping; three, providing surveillance video with a thirty-day retention of video; four, providing a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday from nine P M. to two A M.; five, maintaining adequate lighting in and around the site; six, obtaining and maintaining the proper state permits; and seven, complying with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, police, and fire prevention departments prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item ten, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business a tattoo shop in a general retail district located at sixteen seventeen East Harrison Avenue, Suite A, bearing a legal description of lots thirteen through sixteen, block G, East Park Terrace subdivision. The applicant is Roger Castillo. Agreed.
Thank you, mayor. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a tattoo shop in an existing site on Harrison Plaza. The applicant currently operates a barber shop out of said site and would like to offer tattooing services. The hours of operation for the barber shop will be Tuesday through Saturday from nine thirty A M. to eight P M., and the hours of operation for the tattoo shop will be from Monday through Saturday from ten A M. to eleven P M.
So did I hear you correctly, barber shop and tattoo shop?
That is correct, sir. That's, that's what they're proposing.
And will they, they'll operate at different hours?
Right, but in the same location, same, just offering more options. Of course, the applicant must obtain the, and maintain the proper state permits, and to present, the planning and zoning has not received any objections from the surrounding neighbors. The P S C, I'm sorry, the P and Z recommends approval. I can answer any questions. Yes, sir.
And so the barber shop does not exist at this point? They're going to open simultaneously?
It's already there.
Okay, oh, it's already there.
They're adding a service.
They're going to.
They require the S U P because of the tattoo.
Right, I saw, I just wanted to make sure. It didn't say anything in here how it worked, but I was like, they're together, so he's going to rent like a boot. Okay.
Here's a quick link.
Yeah, I saw.
Can't tell you how many times I wished I could get a tattoo while I was getting my haircut.
Now you can.
I knew somebody was going to say.
Yeah, we love for me.
All right, item A, it's a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Hearing now, and I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is a consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business tattoo shop if you have described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit, S U P, to Roger Castillo to allow adult business tattoo shop in a general retail district located at sixteen seventeen East Harrison Avenue, bearing a legal description of lots thirteen through sixteen, block G, East Park Terrace subdivision, subject to, one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces in accordance with the city regulations; two, maintaining the existing landscaping; three, obtaining and maintaining the proper state permits; and four, complying with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, fire prevention, and police departments, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item eleven, board appointments. Are there any board appointments?
No, sir.
Any board appointments?
No, sir.
All right, no board appointments, so we're going to go to item twelve. We have four executive session items. First one, section five fifty-one point oh seven one, and five fifty-one point oh seven two, and five fifty-one point oh seven oh eight seven. Next is government code to discuss deliberating regarding commercial financial information that the city has received from business prospects that the city seeks to have to locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, and which is conducting economic development negotiations and to discuss and deliberate financial or other incentives with U L A, and to deliberate purchase exchange lease for value of real property, and signalize from the city attorney, and B, to consult the city attorney regarding the N P O merger, and C, to consult in connection with the city's rights privileges and obligations arising out of the M pass ordinance adopted in September twenty seventeen, and the collective bargaining negotiations, and D, the provided legal devices and cities' legal rights privileges and obligations arising out of various industrial development agreements previously negotiated by the city, is a motion to go to executive session.
Some move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now in executive session to consult with our attorney on various items. There could be some action items when we return. Okay, we're out of executive session at six forty-two. Six forty-two. So next item on the agenda is item thirteen, consideration and possible action on project U L A, and success in executive session. Is there a motion to, to approve the action that we discussed in executive session?
Some move.
Some moved.
I have motion second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. We're going to pass item fourteen, there being no action, we need to take. Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to ratify collective bargaining, labor agreement between the city and police departments duly recognized, majority bargaining action with H P O, L E A, conditional prior ratification by the H P O, L E A, and its members.
Mayor, commissioners, this is a collective bargaining agreement that was tentatively agreed to by the union last August. We thought it was going to be approved back then, and then we had actually, I think, even posted it for action before the city commission. It was not, however, approved by the membership at that time. Recently, they undertook a revote on that tentative agreement, and this time it did pass with some minor amendments. The effective date of the contract in terms of its operational provisions for civil service and that kind of thing would be effective upon ratification by both parties. It's already been ratified by the union. It will now be ratified, so that component would take effect upon approval by you. The fiscal component of it, which would be the pay increases that were negotiated, that's been amended, and those would begin in the first full pay period after April one of this year. So that, HR tells me that that begins, April one is a Monday, the first full pay period begins Wednesday, so virtually the same. So the fiscal component would be exactly a half a year into the fiscal budget, and so that would, that would take a kick in at that time. And then the contract is a, was originally a three-year contract. Had it been approved back then, it would have started April one. Now, it's early, so it will be end of the year twenty twenty. So it's the same deal, we just have this little gap period, but we still have effectively the remaining two and a half years of the contract. So Mr. Sutter and I have reviewed this and gone over it, we've talked to HR. We would like to, we were prepared to get closure on it back in September, and we would like to go ahead and recommend that we get closure and ratify this contract at this time.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this staff's recommendation?
Some move.
As presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, congratulations on completing that collective bargaining. Thank you very much. All right, item sixteen says communication there's none. So ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good night, stay warm.